We got plenty of ditches.
Yes.
Plenty of ditches.
Yeah, things to do.
So.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
But welcome.
This one I do need action on. So, consider awarding our CASAT 34 bridge replacement. So, this is a timber structure over the north fork of the Crow River, north of Litchfield. It's a 1963 timber structure, so it's served us pretty well. We got three bids on the project. Lowest was pretty close to our engineer's estimate for about 1.85 million dollars. One thing we do have going for us on this project is some outside funding to help with lifting that dollar amount. We have $400,000 of federal on-system funds that we were successful in receiving, and then about a $717,000 state bridge bonding grant. So, good bits. It's gonna be a good project, so I'd recommend award.
A question, Phil. Structural specialties out of Hutchinson, have they worked for us before? I'm just curious about that.
They have. I think the last bridge they built for us was a township bridge in Cedar Mills.
Oh, okay.
I've worked with them here before, and I've worked with them many times when I was in McLeod County, too. They're a good contractor.
Phil, do we have, do we know when they plan to do the project?
I don't know the contractor's plan, but our construction dates, I think, are set up for like a May start date potentially.
Okay.
We don't plan to close it over the winter.
Yeah.
We want to avoid that.
I didn't. I was anticipating we weren't gonna start in the fall here yet.
Are there any other questions for Phil?
So, what's going on in 22 will be fully complete before 34 ever?
Yes. The 22 Culver and Dats project, they're supposed to be wrapping that up end of this week.
Okay.
That's, uh, they're moving the paver right now.
Okay.
They're gonna pave it today, so actually, I think, I think it's gonna be open tomorrow, or maybe even.
Okay. Yeah, as of.
They just gotta pave the spot back in.
As of last Friday, I think they were gonna pave this Wednesday, and then open it once it's paved.
They're moving the paver from the church here at 22 and 12. They paved that parking lot at Knife River, and they're loading it. The broom was, I passed the broom on the way up, and the, yeah. Equipment is on its way up there, so, and they're all there.
And for coordination purposes, this crossing is the reason that we do not plan to replace the two-bridge that we've talked about quite a bit in Forest City, because two and 34 should not be closed at the same time.
Right.
Work very well. They're parallel routes.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move to award SB 047634012 to Structural Specialties of Hutchinson, Minnesota, for an estimated cost of $1,852,555.61.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orte. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries.
Last item I have for you is just a brief update on the status of our CASAT 34 and Highway 12 intersection project that we've been talking about for a while. So, I don't know if you're aware of the two funding sources we currently are pursuing. We have a freight application that's been applied for. That one's about 2.3 million dollars. And we also have Transportation Economic Development Funds that we've applied for. That's about 2.7 million dollars. When you look at the criteria of these funding programs, I do feel pretty good about our chances on either one, potentially both. So, we'll see what happens. I think we find out early in 2026 if we're successful and selected for funding. Like I've said before, without external funding, this project isn't really gonna go anywhere very fast. But one thing I wanted to update you on today is with the timelines associated with these funding sources, which puts us potentially constructing this as soon as 2028. We wanna get moving with preliminary design, so I've been working with MinDOT and District 8 here out of Wilmer to start putting together a concept. So, what you'll be seeing in the near future is an agreement with MinDOT for them to be, they're gonna start leading the project, which I think will help us through some of their layout review processes. There'll be an agreement coming between the county and MinDOT, which I expect cost splits to be 1/3 county, 2/3 state, to get some, preliminary design is the wrong word, it's layout design, to nail down the exact size and configuration of the roundabout so that we can start moving with right-of-way acquisition and things like that.
Do you think that will help maybe secure those grants? Or will that have no real subtle?
Officially, no, but I know a timeline was a concern of MinDOT as far as fully supporting our grant applications. So, it won't hurt.
Okay.
And the last thing we wanna do is get funding that we can't, on a project that we can't deliver in accordance with the timelines. So, I think that it, it's good to start this process now instead of waiting to see if we have money.
At what point, I mean, I suppose we need a design before we have any idea what the ultimate cost is gonna be on this?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the costs, they seem like a lot for me for a roundabout, but we started in the $3 million area, and when I talked to the state, I think they were talking over $4 million, your expectation.
Okay.
So, we'll see. But really, those costs aren't gonna be very well vetted until, or put together until preliminary design, start getting a plan set together.
Okay.
I, I think there will be some numbers attached to this layout work, but they're not gonna be that fine-tuned.
Sure.
No approvals, just wanted to update you. Any questions on where we're at with that intersection?
No, just kinda, Highway 3 looks nice, rides nice. I haven't driven the whole 11-mile stretch, but I've driven a couple segments of it.
Happy with how it turned out, pretty solid project.
Yeah, good, good comments from the public on it, too, so.
Yep, Knife River did a nice job, and our inspector kept them in line, so I, I'm happy with it.
So, Phil, I'm gonna go back to our, our little replacement over there by Dassel. Have you heard from anyone about the wave or?
Oh, so, um, have you been across it since it got repaved again?
I think I have.
So, the patch near the county line was milled and paved again. Is it perfect? No, but it's much better than it was.
I'll get over there and take it back.
It's adequate at this point. And they also did some paving work through the curve to help get rid of some of the...
Waves.
Waves, bumps, whatever you call it. It, it, there again, it's not perfect, and we'll be, that curve we're gonna be hitting again in the future, 'cause it's gonna keep moving, but hopefully not too frequently. But yeah, those two patches are done. The one on the county line's pretty good.
Good, good.
I think so, too.
I haven't heard from anybody, so, even after the first one, I hadn't heard from anybody, which kinda surprised me, but.
No, honestly, I hadn't heard from anybody after the first one either, which was.
Good.
But you, you'll feel the tire slap, but not the suspension kicking in necessarily like it was after the first try of patching.
Okay. I'll get over, I gotta drive it just to see now, because the way it was, so.
And Phil, you got Darwin Township, you got a good communication there with them. They're all happy and on the right.
Yeah, well, we'll be, what you'll be seeing in the future is a letter from me and from the county board, most likely potentially in support of their application. But I haven't put that together for them yet. We've gotta get some traffic count data, and then they have to send me their preliminary application so I can kinda fill in some blanks.
Okay. Glad you're, you're in communication.
Yep.
Got that, I'll, I'll appreciate it. Great.
Anything else for Phil? All right, thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Greg Schultz, land use.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Morning, I got five items here to consideration. First one is going to be conditional use permit 16679 for owners Paul and Teresa Bender. This is a landscaping project located on 6133-593rd Street, Litchfield, Minnesota. This is on Lake Minnebell. It's in a lagoon. If you notice on the map, on your map, this property owners are planning on constructing a stabilization project along the shoreline in the lagoon. They're going to be adding riprap and sand along the shoreline, creating a shoreline buffer. Other plans on site are to improve the lawn by the shore. So, it has moved to rework for this project to be at least 60 cubic yards. Materials brought on the site will be approximately 10 yards of riprap, 10 yards of soil for the bank, 5 yards of sand, and other materials such as geotextile fabric. Total materials brought in for the project to rework will be approximately 85 cubic yards. Emily Wolf, area DNR hydrologist, did not comment at the time of being on this project, or since then as well. If you notice the pictures up, it's a pretty flat site. It does add some erosion up by the bank. The lagoon, I believe, was a man-made lagoon back in the 50s or 60s or something.
So, it doesn't get any boat traffic?
Really quick, gets deep really fast.
Doesn't get high-speed boat traffic back in there?
Shouldn't, no. I don't know if it does or not.
No worries.
It's pretty narrow.
So, you don't get the wakes and stuff that are banging on the shoreline? Questions for Greg on this one? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application for conditional use permit 16679 to move more than 10 cubic yards of material within the shoreline impact zone and 50 cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the general development Lake Minnebell with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Orte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries.
Next item I have is a conditional use permit 16672 for owners Jeff and Kelly Johnson. It's another landscape project for a property located at 6155-494 Street, just down the road from this lagoon project. It's on Lake Minnebell as well. This property, the owners are planning on constructing an erosion stabilization project along their shoreline. First stop, severe erosion has taken place at the site towards the lake. They're going to be adding riprap along the shoreline, creating shoreline buffer. The plan is to stop the bank slumping by adding 375-foot boulder walls spaced approximately 10 feet apart with no, no stabilization between and drainage. Other plans on site are to improve the access to the lake by adding four-foot wide steps. Soil's moved to rework to further this project to be at least 133 cu, 133 cubic yards. Materials brought on the site will be approximately 45 yards of riprock, riprap rock, 40 yards of soil, 10 yards of gravel, 120 yards of boulders, 27 yards of grain rock and other materials such as steps, geo, and geotextile fabric. Total materials will be about 375 cubic yards. Emily Wolf, area DNR hydrologist, did comment on this and says this is a project that needs repair pretty rapidly. If you notice in the pictures, the next slides, you see how severe that, and that's basically just taking place since this winter. They had a patio that, over, probably about seven, eight feet on it, all just basically is dropping towards the lake. And there's a fault line along that whole bank there that stretches from east to west along the whole property. So, it's not only gonna take landscaping, it's gonna be engineered as well. They gotta have some type of engineering, 'cause it's all clay in there, so they gotta have like rock buffers in between the clay to kinda take the expansion and maybe stop this from happening as well. Pretty complicated project.
Are you seeing that erosion in the adjacent properties as well?
Just gonna ask that.
Not yet, it hasn't got there yet.
Okay. Will this help stabilize that?
It should, there's no guarantees, but I would think it should.
Okay.
So, this is not going to be an inexpensive project for these homeowners. Is one watershed involved in this?
No, they're not, not yet. It was, I know Kim Hempel had mentioned out to maybe the landlord, should maybe look at that, 'cause we don't, we don't approve those projects until roughly December, so maybe they can get on board for some of that.
I would think, 'cause that's the North Fork, and I would think that that would be a priority project.
Water is involved on that end of it. But as far as our water plant stuff is not yet involved on that.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause just from the photos, it almost looks like their house, just the way the water is hitting their property. But I mean, if you look down the bank, you know, there's plenty of slope on the rest of them, and if they're not being affected, it's almost like.
Well, I think, didn't it kinda look like they sit on the point when you had the map up on the?
Back a slide or two, yeah.
Yeah, see, they're right out of.
There is some concern by the neighbors up and down, it keeps on going.
Yeah.
This one is, yeah.
Yeah, they should, I mean, that might be a project. Watershed would put some dollars towards the help in their area.
Yeah.
They wanna get going on part of it this fall to kinda stabilize some of it, so next spring it's not such a...
Yep. They might even.
Any worse.
They might even work in the winter on that one, just so that they can get some equipment out of the ice if it's strong enough.
They might.
Any other questions for Greg on this one? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application for conditional use permit 166. Did I get the wrong one, 72? Is that the right one?
Yep, that's the right one.
To move more than 10 cubic yards of material within the shoreline impact zone and 50 cubic yards of material in the Shoreland District of the general development Lake Minnebell with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Next item I have is for conditional use permit 16656 for owners Trevor Larson and Darren Malcheck for welding and fab shop located in northwest quarter, the northwest quarter, section 24 Township. 120, range 34, city township. This is on parcel 090267001. Property owners apply for conditional use permit, operated dairy and food processing welding and fab shop, contractor business called Elite Stainless. The business builds parts and equipment mainly for the dairy industry. Business plan states the shop will be open five days a week, Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 4:30 PM, with little, very little customer traffic. Apparently, the business plan is to employ 14 employees. Two to four will be shop staff, with six to 10 will be road crews. Anticipate three to five delivery trucks per day with occasional visits from vendors. Future plans are to build a 40-by-60 addition onto the current building if the business takes off more than what it is currently, so. You see inside the shop there, it's, they got it all set up for fabrication already. This is something that's been in the works for the last about year and a half, two years. They started out just the two guys by themselves, and it's kinda the last year's really taken off. Just that now they have 10 to 14 employees already in about a year and a half, so it's a... And those road crews are all over the United States, dairy plants, food plants, things like that, so.
Uh, the stainless side of things, um, they're, they end up doing, I know a gentleman that did that. He's retiring from it, but it's not easy to find stainless welders and for that food grade and, and dairy and stuff like that, so. Yeah, they probably will be off-site quite a bit to trailers and stuff that tends to be.
Most of it will be.
Lot of times traveling and stuff, so.
So, is the entrance and exit to that, that serviced by a township road or?
Yeah, I stayed here around, it's, um, which one is that?
And Fort.
And the township had no input?
Yeah, this is actually just south across from where we permitted the concrete plant for Albany Concrete. This is just across the property line for that Albany concrete plant that we, a couple of years ago, was gonna be there. Just across the property line to the south, yeah.
Further questions for Greg? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the application for conditional use permit 16656 for parcel 090267001 to allow a welding and fabricating shop that serves the food and dairy processing industry in the A1 Agricultural Preservation District within Forest City Township with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Orte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Next item I have is a interim use permit 16655 for daycare facility, property 35497-602nd Avenue, Eden Valley, located in southeast quarter, southwest quarter, section 27 Township 121, range 31, township. Owner applicant, Lacy McCann, has applied for interim use permit. Application operated daycare level two home occupancy business named North Fork Child Care. Business will be providing a welcoming, caring, faith-based, comfortable and learning environment and personalized care. Goal is to create a foundation for learning and lifelong skills to help children be successful in every day of life. The target market are families that encourage their kids to be independent and self-sufficient. Facility will be run by Lacy with subs when needed. Parking will be in the driveway with the hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Questions for Greg? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the interim use permit 16655 to operate a daycare facility at 35497-602nd Avenue, Eden Valley, in section 27 Township 121, range 31 in Banana Township with the conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Samke. Is there a second?
Hold second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any further discussion?
Just a comment.
Yep.
And it's always good to get another daycare.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And they'll do it.
Yes.
They'll do it.
Fine job.
Yep.
I know them guys, so.
Same.
Good, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Last item I have today is for interim use permit 16674 for concrete and bituminous recycling, and property located in section 24 Township 119, range 29, Dassel Township. Applique, applicant has requested renewal of interim use permit to concrete and bituminous recycling. The site will be designated, will designate approximately 10 acres for recycling and is located in the west half of the quarter-quarter section to ensure it meets all required setback from two adjacent dwellings. The site for recycling operation material, this stockpile and the crusher will then be scheduled to come in to crush it. As per the application, all parts of this recycling operation need to meet the requirement being a minimum of three feet above the groundwater elevation of 1,056 feet. Site was originally granted a permit for operation in August 12, 2008, then was renewed in 2013, and then in 2019. The pit is in operation in limited, limited use prior to 2008, as locally known as the Happalot Pit.
Questions for Greg?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve an interim use permit 16674 in parcel 070361000 for concrete and bituminous recycling located in section 24 Township 119, range 29, Dassel Township with the conditions.
Very good motion, Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Next up is our finance director. Morning, Heather.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner. CLA here today to give you an overview of where our 2024 audit was at in the state of the county, and then after she's done, I'll ask, request to publish the 2024 financial statements and vendor list. I'm gonna turn it over to Kristen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning.
Morning.
Perfect, well, on the agenda today, well, first of all, I'm Kristen Hool, signing director on the audit. This was my first year with Meker County. Previous to me was Miranda, if you remember her. But I do audit several other counties in the area. So, on the agenda today, our required communications, followed by internal control and Minnesota legal compliance. Then I will go into the federal single audit and wrap it up with financial results. So, in terms of required communications, the first item here is that we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion. That is the best you can get on the financial statements. The other bullet here is that we did issue this five-page stapled letter. This is the governance communication, so it is required by audit standards that you do receive this, and it was handed out today. It does state that there was a new GASB statement 101 around compensated absences. It talks about if there were to be any difficulties encountered in the audit, which there were none, no significant unusual transactions, no disagreements with management, everything was clean. It also does talk about any uncorrected misstatements or corrected misstatements we had. So, then going into internal control, so there are two types of internal control deficiencies that we are required to put into writing. The first being a material weakness. So, these are material in nature, and they could go and not be prevented or detected on a timely basis. So, the two noted here are material audit adjustments and financial reporting process. So, material audit adjustments, we had to book adjustments to the financials when we received them that were material. So, some accruals, net pension liability, OPEB, we adjusted loan proceeds, transfers, unearned revenue. Very common things that we see.
We shouldn't be doing that next, some of this is just a... Kristen and I have worked together in other jobs, but as I start to take over, some of these things will be taken care of.
Shouldn't work together, 'cause you have our, the adjustment listing. And then the other item here is that CLA does draft the financial statements. So, in the future, if Heather wants to look over the disclosure checklist and, you know, attest that everything is in there, that can also be resolved. So, we will work on that for the 25 audit. The other type of internal control deficiency is a significant deficiency, so still important enough to be in writing, but less severe than a material weakness. So, the item here is lack of segregation of duties. So, there's some departments within the county, the smaller ones, that have some segregation items that we've noted, primarily over cash collections. There just aren't enough people in the offices to fully segregate, very common with counties your size. And then some other areas, which those other areas are a lot easier to work with Heather and her team around documenting controls over, like cutoff, after accruals are posted, that someone's reviewing them and making sure they're good. So, those ones, we can work with Heather's team to make sure that those are easy, those are low-hanging fruit, so. Okay, and then going into legal compliance, so the Minnesota State Auditor's Office publishes each year about 25 pages of various statutes that you are required to comply with. So, in looking at all of them, we have no issues noted. Great job there. Any questions so far? So, then going into the federal single audit, since you spent just over $5.3 million of federal expenditures, we did have to test two programs to gain coverage. So, the programs tested were medical assistance, or the Medicaid cluster, and ARPA, or the COVID-19 Corona state and local fiscal recovery funds. So, those are the two programs we tested this year. On page eight, then, it does discuss if there were any findings over those or deficiencies. So, for ARPA, there was one significant deficiency, and that was around suspension and demarmament. So, we tested six transactions. One did not have proof of that suspension and demarmament check before the contract was signed. It was checked after, or as it was done, but it does require you to make sure they're not suspended or demarred before entering the contract. So, that one is pretty easy also to watch. I know Heather has been watching it previously, so. The other program we tested is medical assistance. So, two significant deficiencies there. The first around allowable costs. So, we found two of two social service random moment study listings did not have accurate employees listed. And then the other item was around eligibility. So, case file reviews were not performed for quarters one to three. So, that wraps it up for the federal single audit. So, now going into the financial results. There's several graphs here. The first ones are pretty high-level, and then I'll go into detail by fund. So, on page 10, this shows your governmental funds, revenues, and expenditures. So, you'll see that expenditures did exceed revenues this year overall by 3.7 million. Like I said, this is just the high-level look, and then we'll go over the details of why things went up or down in the next slides. And you can see here, I mean, the main driver is your remodel of why things went up. So, then if we go into page 11, this shows your months of expenditures and fund balance for all the government. So, how many months would you go with having no revenues coming in? And with your not restricted or non-spendable fund balance, so your more cash flow fund balance that you have. So, the State Auditor's Office recommends no less than five months. You'll see here, all five months, or all five years listed are over that. So, you ended 2024 at about 6.4. And you'll see that did drop off, but you had quite a few more expenditures this year because of that remodel, so that pulled it. because of that remodel, so that pulled it down. So then on page 12, this shows your revenues by source for all the governmental funds. You'll see the three major sources here are taxes, intergovernmental, and charges for services. Taxes are steadily increasing, which is good with inflation. You don't, it's, you don't want to be stagnant and then have to have a really large levy increase in any one given year. And then intergovernmental does fluctuate by your projects that are going on and the funding coming in. And like I said, I will go over the details of what's driving these in the next slide. So then going on to expenditures, you'll see there are major functions here being general government, public safety, highways and streets, capital outlay. The only thing I want to note here is capital outlay you see spiked up quite a bit in 2024. So we have been now required to put all capital outlay into that bucket. In the past, your highways and streets were in that, like the third row there. Now they're being pulled into capital outlay for reporting, financial reporting. So that is why it spiked up so much, is all capital outlay is going in there, plus the remodel did increase it about 4 million as well. So going forward, it'll start to level up.
So highway, streets, and transit will eventually lower.
Correct. You'll see in '23 it was 10 million, then it went down to four because it dropped down into that other bucket.
Yep.
So. Okay. So then looking on page 14, this shows your cash balance for all governmental funds. So they did drop quite a bit, but the main reason were you had the unspent bond proceeds in '23. So you've spent those down now, so that decreased that cash. So now starting to look at each fund. So the first slide here is the general fund. So revenues did exceed expenditures by 975,000, and the net change in fund balance after transfers was a negative 107,000. You had 7.8 months in fund balance compared to 8.8 last year. You'll see revenues did decrease about 880,000. Taxes were down as well as intergovernmental, and then expenditures were up about 2.8 million. So things that drove those up were salaries. You had network infrastructure upgrade, EMS upgrade, survey expenses, and vehicle purchases. So those were in there. But I will note the excess line here. You'll see that all five years presented, you were over. Revenues were over expenditures, which is good. So then going into the road and bridge fund, revenues did exceed expenditures by about 175,000. 2.5 million was sitting in unavailable revenue or deferred inflows for state aid for highway at year end, and that really fluctuates based on that highway user tax money that's coming in. Revenues were down 1.1 million, mainly intergovernmental. Highway user tax is down 1.5 million, but taxes were up about 480,000. And then expenditures were down about 1.8 million, less projects during the year, which makes sense that your revenue was also down. So then looking at the human service fund, you'll see that expenditures did exceed revenues by about 888,000. The primary source of funds is intergovernmental revenue, followed by taxes. And if you look at the graph, you'll see that the expenditures have exceeded revenues in all years but one. And so revenues did increase about 2 million this year. Taxes and intergovernmental drove that up, and then expenditures increased about 1.7 million, driven by salaries, and then combining public health into the human service fund. So then looking on page 18 is the debt service fund. So expenditures did exceed revenues by about 77,000. Ending fund balance that is restricted for your future debt payments totals about 611,000. You will see here that your expenditures, you know, exceeded revenues, which means you did not levy the 105% that's required by statutes. So just making sure that you're doing the resolution to say you're going to use fund balance.
We did, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. And then looking at the capital projects fund, you'll see here that expenditures exceeded revenues by about 3.7 million, and so your net impact after a transfer was about 1.8 million that you've spent down. And so, like I said, the, you know, remodel and roof project, all the furniture design that's sitting in the expenditures, that went up about 4.5 million, and then revenues went up about 1.5 million, and that's because you spent the ARPA money, the federal money, on, partially on this project. So then that was able to be recognized in '24. Any questions on the funds?
That's a lot of information.
Trying to summarize this book. So then going into the county indebtedness for governmental funds, you'll see here that net pension liability, that's that red line that really fluctuates. It's, you know, coming from the state, from their actuary study of what your liability would be if, you know, they shut the door at 1231. Geo bonds are coming down now, making scheduled payments. And then the other item I wanted to note was compensated absences that did go up about 600,000. That was due to that new GASB 101 in '24 that was implemented. The more likely than not is what drove it up. So you used to only book what you were liable to pay out at retirement or termination. In addition, now, you are required to book what's being used as the employees are still here. So any, based on estimated usage in the past. So if they usually use 50% of their sick, that would now get booked into this. So that was the major driver of that. So then, just in summary, like I said, we implemented GASB 101. And then upcoming standards, 2025 should be a very quiet year. GASB 102 is out, but that's disclosing risks around like concentrations and constraints, which I don't foresee you having any. And then coming into the '26 audit, that one will be a larger new standard, and that is around the financial reporting model improvements. So your management's discussion and analysis at the front, that's going to be more robust. Your proprietary funds are going to look different in, back in the budget-to-actual statements. You're going to have to have an extra column, so you're going to have to have the variance between original and final budget if you do make amendments during the year. And then any significant fluctuations have to go into the notes to that RSI or the required supplementary information and actually note it out to the users of the financials. And then your component units are to be disclosed in separate columns now as well. So a lot of changes that will go on into the financials two years from now. But I note this because, like I said, budgets are a major item here, so as you roll into '26 in a couple months here, to really keep note of why things are changing. So it makes it easier once the '26 audit starts. So that is all I had. Like I said, a lot of information, but...
Yes.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Boy, you did a great job because we don't have any questions.
You're still processing it all.
Yes.
Well, I guess I'm, so I'm assuming that there really aren't any big concerns. There's nothing that we're needing to address, so.
No. And like we said, you know, Heather has a lot of experience coming in, so she can work to address some of the items we did talk about even.
Perfect.
Yeah, some adjustments, but I mean, really, that's why we're doing audit.
And there's changes every year in what we have to do.
Rules change. Yeah, you got to keep up the rules.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
Great. So can I get the approval to authorize the request and publish the financial statements and the vendor list as required by statutes in the county's official papers?
I will be looking for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the publication of Meeker County's 2024 summary financial statements and vendor list.
I have a motion by Commissioner Van Orde. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Heather, can you just hit escape on your computer? Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm going to have Brad come up here. As we go over the Treasurer's annual report. This is some responsibilities. That's somebody have the list of responsibilities at the Treasurer's office. One thing also not on here is we also do cash management, but didn't note that on the list at the time. We currently process payroll biweekly for approximately 257 employees, so that keeps us busy along with the taxes and receipts. This is a overall overview of the last few years of how we've done in interest income. We are on trend to make it this year, but with the rate cuts, as you guys know, they just cut rates again yesterday. We're looking to build out a ladder over the next five years to try to keep this stable, but we probably won't see the big increases and spikes that we've seen in previous years. It's just a result of the interest rate and the cost.
Well, we don't have the dollar amounts either. We spent some money.
And we spent some money down, so we won't have the same amount of cash as we've had in previous years as well, so. But, well, we're hoping to do the best we can by building out the ladder and sustaining the interest income long-term. That's all we can do.
Yep.
And you just heard from Kristin on the state of the county and how we're doing, so no major concerns, just some things that we can button up and make better for next year. And I want to do a big thank you to the Treasurer staff. We've been processing lots of tax payments in the last week. Oh, boy, we've been really very busy, and we have one more round left on the November 15th for agriculture and mobile homes.
So is it more work to process when they do an arch payment to you or direct?
No, I think each of them has their own. It's better to get the wires and the ACHs because then
It is.
we don't have the, like, return NSF fees that we can have and all the other stuff. So obviously, we welcome the wire payments and ACHs.
Okay.
Do you, um, do you get some, what percentage, if you had to guess, of folks pay all their taxes in May?
Um, I'm not sure. I ran a report, and so overall, so far, what we've collected was about 35 million so far, and we have about 6.5 million left unpaid, but a lot, majority of that could be the November 15th agriculture.
And, you know, we've seen that report in the past of the total amount paid. I think typically after the May payment, we see like 51, 52% of the total amount that gets paid, which means that it's a, there's an insubstantial, or there's a fairly substantial number of people who do pay the full amount to get the full, a full percentage point more, but it's not the vast majority of people, obviously.
I was just wondering if it's 3%. Insignificant, I just thought it was my question.
We've collected a large sum of money already.
But you know, it's so, it's so easy to forget. I'm set up on that, so. But you send out an email about three days ahead of time saying you're going to hit the account, but I can never be late that way.
That is true.
Never have a late payment, never forget to make it, or...
We do, uh, do publish in the paper and on the radio. We do try to tell, give everyone every kind of warning possible.
Yeah.
It is easy to forget, so. And then this is just a chart of where we are with the vital stats, and says we're on trend to make it or even exceed this year. Interestingly enough, the deaths are down, but marriages are up, as you can see in the chart.
We don't see the divorce rate, though.
Yeah.
Can, marriage amendment. I know I've asked this question before, but I don't remember what that means.
They're looking to make a change on what they've applied for. Usually it's either a spelling mistake, or they wanted to change your last name but forgot to put it on the form.
Okay.
So that, this is the whole...
I don't know.
I was just...
What, we can amend a marriage?
Is that easy? Go to the card now.
That happens right after you say aye do.
Thank you. Yes. And then this is a chart kind of showing the breakdown of the births and, in and out of Meeker County, so just for comparison's sake over the years. So it looks like we're kind of holding steady. A slight increase in some and slight decrease in other columns.
More kids.
Well, we got more daycare coming. We just approved that one today, so.
And then our last slide just kind of shows, again, some additional information. Again, that interestingly enough, the overall deaths are down and marriages are up, so.
And divorces are down.
And divorces are down as well. So at the end of the day, very good stats on what's...
That's positive.
Are the previous years full years, though, in 20, oh, no, it's through 2024. Never mind. Yeah. Oh, that's good news.
That's all I have today.
Can I ask a question? It was back on, on slide number three, and it said 59 plan options in our payroll system?
For just the various benefits.
Okay. So if she had it and chose...
You know, like, the dental, there's the high and low, but then each of those are broken down into employee, employee and spouse, employee and child, family. Then there's eight different options just there for dental.
Okay. Counts up, then.
Yes, it does.
Any other questions for?
Oh, you guys have a lot to keep track of there.
Yes, we're very busy.
Well, please thank yourself and your staff for the work they do, because we certainly don't get many complaints. Probably closer to zero.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is this the agenda item you asked?
It is.
All right. Tina?
Paul.
You were the added agenda item. Yes.
I was just gonna, Heather, I like the format, too. I see the changes in the board packet, the way the bills are presented and stuff. Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give you a big... We'll discuss later. It's a joke, okay?
Okay. I'm honestly, either I'm it, or I'm unaware.
Okay, Tina, if you're ready.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to have this late agenda item. Hopefully, the information provided made sense to you. We are currently attempting to plan for the anticipated, we will not get issuance of SNAP benefits starting November 1st if the government shutdown continues. In addition to that, we anticipate that our Minnesota Family Investment Program, EMFIP, will also no longer be issued benefits in November. We did get good news. We were also planning for WIC to run out of money October 31st, and they are telling us that they have till November 15th now. So we're going to get into November with, with WIC. So I've been somewhat keeping you all up to date with our planning in your email. We are trying to take a number of actions to best position the agency to assist families and individuals as they try and figure this out, those recipients. So amending our EMFIP plan for just 2025 would allow us to take the emergency assistance portion of that and be able to apply the titles that we have left in that fund, expand those for people impacted by this lack of benefit issuance in November. Hopefully, hopefully it won't happen, but this would allow us to just have another tool in our, in our tool belt to assist with that. Normally, we need to see a shut-off or eviction notice prior to assisting folks with this. We also have them go through UCAP prior to coming to the county, and these are dollars that are, you just approved the '26, '27 EMFIP plan. These are dollars that are allocated to us by the state. We have to create a budget and, and hand that into DCYF. So this would allow us to amend our '25 budget, to expand the use of those dollars. So this would allow us to amend our twenty-five budget, to expand the use of those dollars. And then we would also provide notification to the state regarding that. And in terms of the overall planning for this lack of benefit issuance, I think the, the staff have done a marvelous job. And our community partners have just really stepped up to try and assist families and individuals. We're getting some calls that are very, very hard to hear. An older person on, just getting, you know, just social security. And of course, is quite elderly, can't, can't go out and get a side job or something. You know, having a lot of anxiety over how they're going to eat. Worrying about our kids. It's, it's been a lot. And those folks that really walk alongside these families. So we're just trying to do everything we can to have some way to meet some of the need. And then we're going to need to depend on the community to step up around those people impacted.
So Andrew had made a statement, I think yesterday at, at our meeting that a lot of the food shelves had made an extra request from.
Heartland.
Heartland.
Yes, so we met with Jamie, our food shelf director, last Friday. And she had already, did she say she doubled her?
I don't recall what the amount was, but she said she was putting in a large order.
So she, her order is due, I believe, next Thursday and then will come in the following week. So the county, countywide, we're doing a food shelf drive right now just to try and get some basic items stocked up for her ahead of. DCYF is notifying everyone on those programs today. And we anticipate just, like during COVID, how everybody went and got toilet paper, right? When there's that scarcity, fear of scarcity, then that drives need. So we're anticipating, you know, even more. She's already up. She said ten percent this month. And we're anticipating folks might, you know, ahead of November first even, you know, walk, walk in at a higher rate. So we're trying to provide some of that thank you to all of our departments in the county for participating. And I think we're doing, we had some quite large collections even just yesterday, which was the first day, so.
Do we have a system or way to get the word out to the community to, you know, just different citizens in the community to donate? Is there something we can do on social media?
Or connect with churches and.
Exactly. Is there a cereal association as well? Yeah.
So we, um, like I said, we met with some of our core partners. That'll be really the face of this for folks in the community. UCAP and, and the food shelf being the primary too. There's a, you know, there's levels of concern, right? So both UCAP and, and the food shelf said, we probably have enough resources to handle this for a week or two. And then, of course, they already, the, the community is extremely generous. And they have all these regular, you know, like for instance, we have the holiday project coming up, right? At Thanksgiving, there's the food baskets for elderly. So there's concern about how do we message and how do we, if needed, you know, how do we make sure that the regular source of income for those folks remains and that this is additional? And I think that I did hear back from UCAP, for instance, I think we'll wait another week or two, maybe closer to November first to, before we pull, I'm not supposed to say that anymore. Somebody just told me, I'm not supposed to say pull the trigger anymore, before we start advertising for, you know, how people can help. But if, if, you know, folks are hearing this or seeing messaging, we have tried to get out, Andrew submitted to the radio some information. We did do a social media post for our children's department, Facebook account and put that on the town pages and things like that.
Good.
About the changes and, and to, you know, that the community is facing this. But if we need to do some donation drives or, or get that word out, I think the most important thing for folks to remember is to connect with Jamie or Rochelle first, so Jamie at the food shelf or Rochelle at UCAP, to make sure that they can manage that, that donation. So for instance, storage at the food shelf is limited. So if they were to get a truckload of food, we don't want them not to be able to process that, right? So like at the county, when we're doing the food drive, we're going to connect with Jamie. We can maybe deliver part of it and then another part to help her also keep her capacity for storage of that food. So just plan with, if, if folks are planning on doing something. But that, that will be some next steps that we will definitely, you know, look to our partners to assist with.
I have to say, I have to, I really appreciate all that you guys have done to get in front of this as it, to see what's coming down the pipeline. Just all of the different people in charge of different parts. It's really good. Really appreciate that.
And just to go with what Cheryl said, I've seen the, the messages from Deb Brandt and, and you guys partnering up. And she's been trying to keep us as up to date as she can from her avenue too. But it's just good that we're all working collaboratively to.
Well, I think, I think the other, another thing to keep an eye on is, you know, even though there's large food orders in, we, Ryan Erdman said yesterday too, we need to keep in mind that everybody's putting in large orders too. So what you order and what you get could be two different things too. And, and so these challenges depend on, I, I think we are at the longest shut, I don't know, or within a year.
Thirty-five days is the longest, so we're still fourteen days away from that.
Yeah, potential to go for the record. But as this unfolds or plays out, there'll be pressure on different systems. And hopefully, I know I talked the Eden Valley Food Shelf here two weeks ago or so. And at that time, I mean, they're like, no, we're, we're good financially and with, with product. But those things change fast, like you say, and the scarcity mindset takes over. And, and you start to hear news of, you know, and, and shipments not being as big as what you anticipated and stuff. So hopefully, as this plays out, we are able to stay in front of it. I, I, I agree. I applaud you for the efforts and everybody for their efforts of staying in front of it. But, uh, we'll do our best to support, support the process too as we move forward here.
Thank you, and, and we'll continue to send out talking points and immediately release those as we have increases, you know, as this moves forward. I do think, um, you know, my, my best hope is that we don't get to November first, that our partners in Washington can recognize the impact that their lack of decision-making is having on our, on our most vulnerable neighbors. It is really concerning that we can probably pull this off for November, but both staff time-wise and grants that, you know, we're not using any county levy dollars towards any of these efforts. It's all reliant on our grants or community partners. So there is concern, this does need to get wrapped up. So I think Mr. Lutz and I have also talked about potentially contacting legislators with some messaging about the impact locally of their lack of ability to make decisions in Washington.
Yeah, and sometimes, there are times, I should say, when no decision is a decision. And, and this is an example of one of them, so.
And we tend to forget about the trickle down, the trickle away from the branches. When they talked about the grocery store was two hundred thousand dollars a month?
Oh.
Yeah, there was one, yeah, there was one grocery store in Aiken, I believe it was, that the SNAP benefit provided two hundred thousand dollars a month of revenue for that grocery store, so.
Yeah, so these small towns that maybe are still able to support a grocery store could be affected quite significantly by that, which then affects the employees and it just goes bigger. So, yeah. But thank you for the planning so that we're not.
We hope it was all.
For nothing.
Effort for the sake of our folks that depend on, on this to, you know, fill their basic needs. So we hope that we planned for nothing.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, we do need a motion to approve the amendment to the.
Oh, that's right.
We do need a motion to approve the amendment to the EMFIP plan.
Anybody got it?
Is it written?
He just said it. Motion to, motion to amend the EMFIP plan.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to amend the EMFIP plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt, second by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we move on, I just wanted to again commend the, the great work that these folks have been doing. On Tuesday last week happened to be the HHS's all-agency training day. And they included the end of the day in exercise, talking about our new mission statement, which of course is united to lead and driven to serve. And immediately out of that was an opportunity to live that mission. Um, of course, coordinating amongst themselves, coordinating amongst the community. And we had several staff members who stayed late that night to process applications as quickly as they could because we were told that that was going to be the last day to get them, get them approved. And we are one of eighty-seven counties who did that, but we had a lot of really dedicated staff who, who followed through with that. So just want to make sure you were all aware of that and of course, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And remind your staff of the, we do appreciate the efforts, every single effort they make, so.
The governor just sent out a proclamation, ironically, that tomorrow, right, is Credibility Appreciation Day. So it's probably very timely.
Please grab a donut on your way.
Oh, we've got snacks.
Thank you.
That is one thing about that group, they are never short on snacks. Positive thing.
But I do, it was, I just happened to stop in the government center the Tuesday. And they're like, oh, there's tacos upstairs. So I come up here and literally Tina and Andrew and a few folks are sitting in here wrapping up the day and had a taco, but then that's kind of when the news broke that, you know, November first is the day. And they immediately went into, you know, program mode and let's get as many people. So their quick reaction time is very, very noteworthy.
Yes, trying to do their regular, all the things they normally do and adding that, that's a lot.
My wife is.
No fires in HHS.
No.
The lesson also that we learned that day is if you want Steve to show up, have tacos.
Was it Tuesday?
It was a Tuesday.
Yeah, Taco Tuesday. Noted.
Tacos upstairs, I'm like.
All right, the administrators report.
Uh, actually, before we do that, we have an item about appointing delegates to the. AMC and MCIT annual, trust and, MCIT annual meetings. So, um, kind of taking these things one at a time. Looking at MCIT first, we got a mailer from them stating that Commissioner Schmidt is currently our delegate. Commissioner Johnson is the alternate. If, if we, we can confirm those appointments or we can make any changes, the four of you are all going to be at the AMC Annual Conference, which is when the MCIT Annual Meeting occurs. And so I just wanted to, before I just signed off and said, yeah, that's good, I wanted to make sure that you all had an opportunity to discuss that. So we'll talk about that, then we'll talk about the AMC one, so.
Any reason to change? Unless somebody else wanted to. If, you know, I'm just a delegate. Steve and I coordinate. If Steve thinks he might not make the vote, I make sure I'm in there. But I'm fine doing it. That's not the issue. It's just if somebody else wanted to take my spot as the alternate.
Just fine.
Yes, I really like how we have been doing things the most. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Commissioner Schmidt as the MCIT delegate and Commissioner Johnson as the alternate delegate.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Ort. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
All right, so the other thing I wanted for you to consider is, so every year AMC holds its election for its officers. And we are able to identify up to eight delegates for that. So per the bylaws, every county gets to have one delegate per board member plus three additional. And since we have five commissioners, that's how you get to eight. It's simple math at that point. The, um, historically, it had always been the five commissioners and then the county administrator. Last year, because we had someone running for a position, we, we snuck our other person who was attending, our HR director in there. This year, our Health and Human Services Director is also attending the conference. And so I just wanted to pose it to the board if there's an interest in appointing that position as the delegate for, a delegate for this year as well. If there's anyone else who would like to maybe attend and would like to be a delegate, you would have the option to either appoint that person or scorn them today as well, so.
I like the thing that we didn't sneak anybody in.
No, 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 we didn't sneak anyone in.
We filled our.
There was no trigger.
A kill to a position.
Yes.
No, I would agree. It wasn't a sneak.
I like.
I would say as long as Tina, right?
Yeah, it would be Tina.
Is going to be there, she should be eligible to vote, yes.
There's nothing worse than sitting in a meeting where you can't vote and everybody else is voting.
I feel that twice, mouth, Paul.
So do I, do we need a motion on this?
We do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, how is it written here?
The Health and Human Services Director is an AMC delegate for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that, yeah, there.
What Andrew said.
To, uh, for twenty twenty-five delegate.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Okay. Uh, on to my report then. Just one quick item for you I wanted to bring up, actually two things. One, we are going to have a work session next week. It's going to focus on the, the hospitals project. And it'll be an opportunity for you all to learn about where they're at and what your role is going to be when it comes towards the financing of that project. The second piece is, I wanted to provide you a quick update on where we're at with staffing right now. This last week, we were able to promote a part-time corrections officer to a full-time corrections officer, which means that we are full on full, on corrections officers, full-time corrections officers.
That's good.
There was a point a year ago where we were close to half down in that pool. So the fact that we are back up to fully staff there is, is a testament to that team, the work that they've done to fill those spots, but also I, I think a lot of the work that we did through our contract negotiations as well. We are short in a few different areas. In Public Works, we have two heavy equipment operator positions open. We have a full-time deputy position that they've been trying to fill. There's a couple of part-time bailiff positions that are open. There's a variety of other part-time, on-call, as-needed deputy corrections officer positions that they keep a roster of. They're always hiring for those, but we, we don't have many of them at this point, which we haven't for about five years, which is not surprising. We have a vacancy in our property records department, looking for a specialist there. And then we have a case manager position in Health and Human Services. But that's it. You're talking one, two, three, four, five full-time positions out of two hundred and ten? We're doing pretty good. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay, so we'll go on to commissioner reports. And I indicated yesterday I would start with Commissioner Van Ort and give her a heads up that it was coming.
Thank you. I had Pioneer Land Library System, Executive Finance Committee, and then also their regular library board meeting last week. And they're doing well. They were seventy-five percent through the budget year and they have used seventy-two percent of their budget. So that's going well. And then the library system itself just had a new hire. The director will be retiring and so there's some transitional things happening there. And then they have the same concerns that pretty much all of us do with regard to salary increases. They're negotiating with head librarians, but salary increases, health insurance costs and those kind of things. But overall, pretty, pretty well on track, so, so that's it for the libraries.
Were they, I'm sorry, were they warned kind of like in terms of, did we not lower their?
We did not increase or their, what we give to them. So they are funded through the state, I believe, funds them a certain base amount and then we can add to that. Our county has added, um, a few different times in the past few years. There are counties around us that have not in seven years. And the money that we give to Pioneer Land Library Systems stays for Meeker County. And so our libraries are okay. Some of the counties around us, the smaller libraries are really struggling because they are not funding them. There, our libraries are pretty well used too. They have some statistics of the amount of people that use our libraries. And it's, it's higher than maybe you would expect, so. So, yeah, any other questions about the libraries, so? And then yesterday, we had the. Then yesterday, we had the District Five Fall Meeting, and one thing that um I thought was interesting, we had a ballot uh to to determine some priorities, um and they had um twelve items on that ballot, and we were to vote for which five we thought were the most important. And so um general government, uh technology and modernization was the first, and that, as we all know, is our health and ser- human services technology is outdated by, what, twenty, thirty, thirty years? The next was um the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation and Child Welfare Disproportionality Act. And so to to work on uh the implement- implementation of that. And then SNAP, um mitigating the impact of SNAP and Medicaid policy cost shifts. Number four was mental health, um and as we know as a county, we're having some significant expenses because of um the care, of the cost of care for that. So AMC supports a long-term state investments, investment in a comprehensive mental health continuum, so that was priority number four. And then number five um has to do with the solid waste, um that changes uh the costs because of the changes in that, so. So those were the top five, um and that is all I have.
Okay, I would I would just comment on those priorities, um really what they're doing, because every district does that same.
Yes.
Uh rating, if you will, and it's really to take a pulse of the state, the counties in the state, what they feel is the most important, and to bring that back, everything on there and everything in your policy platforms, uh anything on the platform is is uh.
Will still be addressed.
More than likely will be talked about at some point during the session, and of course, like last year, things change on like February tenth, the first day that they they meet, and the governor's budget comes out, that's when some of those things will shift, there's, you know, might, some might become irrelevant, but uh really what they're doing is taking a pulse of every county in the state and combining them at the end of the district meetings here in two weeks, and.
So they understand what our biggest concerns are.
Can help uh address them too, I mean, give you information, if that's an area, you know, certain areas have different pressing issues, then they can get you more information to help you navigate through those challenges, so.
I thought it was a good meeting um yesterday, I it was good to hear where other counties are um in regard to their levies and uh so.
I was confused about the list of counties that we were handed that had, but one of the counties wasn't on it, I don't think Scott County was on it, and then there was a bunch, I I was confused as to why that was composed the way it was.
So it's a survey that's conducted of all eighty-seven counties, and if they don't respond, they're not on the list.
Oh, okay, thank you, that answered my question.
You've wrapped.
I am complete.
Karen, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um after last, um the seventh, after our meeting, I ended up at the uh for the EDA at the two twenty-five Sibley Apartment Tour, which was apparently at the old pizza place that burned down, that they redid that and put three apartments up above, um it was very nice, I was very impressed, and hopefully they'll be able to find a.
Downtown?
Commercial, um yeah, I'm sorry, two twenty-five Sibley.
Yep, yep.
So that was actually really interesting, and I thought the apartments upstairs were very nice, and hopefully, I mean, it reminded me of um when I was at a conference in Red Wing and how the Red Wing downtown was, a lot of these commercial old buildings were being refabbed and then putting apartments above, and I just thought that was really uh kind of right along those lines, and it was, I think, going to be a real nice addition. Hopefully, they'll find a restaurant or a business that can um take over that commercial space down below.
Commercial space down there.
No, no, it's very, it's very rough right now, the upstairs is, looks beautiful, they're ready to go.
They are.
But, and and it was interesting to see just how, you know, they're using all modern kind of um utilities and water heat and um, yeah, all re- all brand new, they put some money into that thing, so it looks pretty nice.
And I'm assuming this is the building that EDA contributed some dollars to.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Then I'm on it, before, I couldn't make it though, so that was before I speak, um but you you, the, our apprehension is the word I'll use on EDA was that that building, I believe by the time they're done, is going to have roughly eight hundred thousand.
I would think that's probably pretty accurate.
It's going to be worth two and a quarter, or two hundred and fifty thou- yeah, Cheryl will know better than I will on that, but uh um where do we draw draw the line on how much we invest into some of these buildings, so? Um we did, we rejected them the first time, and when they came back, um we gave them half as much, and part of it was a loan rather than a grant. So there's, uh there was some controversy, discussion on that.
It wasn't a clear cut.
We weren't the only ones in it as well.
There was several funding.
Yeah, they used some grants in different, I think McKnight might be in some of that stuff, but.
And the difficulty with that is we're putting money into buildings that don't have the structure to withstand the traffic, the jarring of the traffic, um that goes by on those, some of the base, if those buildings is.
Well, I went in the basement, and they did have a full, oh, yeah, they had a full big main beam down there with supports that look new, that they had used to.
I have to say, I never thought about the the vibration and so forth from the semis coming by and the.
Oh, sure.
It's a, it's a challenge, and it's one of the historic preservation buildings, you know, so it's in that district too, so I mean, there's, there's challenges to that.
Yep. Then on Wednesday, I had a n- meeting with Blue Earth, they were the solar people, and she came to my office and talked about some of their plans for Down by Cosmos, and they're starting that process, and I'm thinking, great. But it was very preliminary, so we'll see how that goes. And then had the paid leave presentation, and then the um the HSA presentation on the uh um health savings account stuff, so there was a bunch of meetings that day, and then on the ninth, I had the Meker Area Lakes Meeting, so I went to that. That was, that was real interesting, I mean, and again, it was, I don't know anything about lakes, but it was uh, they, I think they appreciated me being there, and they were like, oh, we really appreciate you being here, that um Mike, the chairman of the, of our AIS committee kind of introduced me, and that was um positive, but it was a good opportunity to kind of learn a little bit more about some of the lakes and how they're, all the different, I mean, they did reports, and they would, some people went on and on, some people didn't, you know, but it was interesting to hear some of the different things happening in that regard. Let's see, then we had the cybersecurity thing on the fifteenth, and then we had the AMC meeting, and then we've got MAP today, so, yeah, that's all I've got.
All right.
Mr. Schmidt, please.
Yeah, thank you, um so that's our last board meeting, I've I've had an AMC board meeting, and really was uh setting the stage for uh the district meetings, which we had District Five yesterday, I was up in Duluth on Friday for District One, was the kickoff, was the first district meeting, um always interesting to um to sit in these different districts and and hear the different challenges in the different regions of the state. And uh and there to um keeping a running tally of budgets so far, and there, that seven is kind of a medium number right now so far, so um the highest one I've seen is a twelve-four, so there's some, and there is, but there is, what, a two-six was the, was the lowest I've seen, so. But um another, oh, and on the twelfth, Sunday the twelfth, Grove City had their Oktoberfest, uh where they have a silent auction, and they have a sell homemade cookies and bars and have a dinner and stuff, and very well attended, and it's usually, it's one of their larger fundraisers for the year, so. Went went very well, beautiful day that day. Other than that, really, those are the main things that I've, oh, and then um in the, and Andrew, and I think Holly and Missy, right? Is that the four from Meker are in the uh leading on purpose? Through NACO, and we had our first meeting yesterday afternoon, and we got, we had about enough time to get home and and sign on to to that, so that'll be from now until December twentieth, I think, eight, eight or ten?
Eight.
Eight.
Nine weeks, there's a break in there, it's eight sessions.
Yeah, yeah, so. So that'll be good, and uh other than that, I don't have a lot, just a lot of activity with Highway Three and Highway Twenty-two, and and now approval of the thirty-four bridge, so plenty of activity up in our end of the district, so.
Okay, thank you. I had a PAC Four meeting, um you know, PAC Four is really reliant on grants, um state, federal, so forth. We've done very well, um but we we did find out um that we are not getting a grant, and so we have three people that are affected by that. Because of vacancies and qualifications, we were able to put two in other positions. But we still have one position, one person, full-time position, um that temporarily we've taken down to halftime. So we need to, we're going to have a meeting about that to see where we're going to go with that, because, you know, when you have an individual, and that's their primary job, and all of a sudden you say you're at twenty hours a week and spend a forty, chances are good if they have another opportunity, we will lose them, so we want to make sure that we're full on everything else, and we can't place them somewhere else in our organization. Then on Friday, I was Ella Marshall for the Southwest Eighteen Mental Health Consortium, another really good meeting. We approved some reallocation of some funds um to counties that uh needed those funds to finish out the year. And then um when we created the the Joint Powers Agreement a year ago, um and created the Advisory Committee, the Advisory Committee has kind of felt like they don't have a purpose, you know, they used to vote, they used to approve, they used to move the money around and everything, and now they're just kind of uh at that point where they feel like they've lost their voice. So we had a a really good discussion, a lengthy discussion about that, and we are going to take a look at a strategic plan. You know, you do tend to spin and circle if you don't have a plan where to go, and we have to remember that this particular consortium went from uh two million dollars a year to almost five million dollars a year in their budget. So all of a sudden, they got thrown a whole bunch of money, you got to have a plan, you got to have a way, and you got to think about this, so. We are going to do um at our meeting in November, um which will be a full Joint Powers Board meeting, we will have to um or probably will approve a strategic plan at a session and come up with something, so everybody stops the spinning around and somewhat like a circle, and get everybody on the same page. So I think that was, that's going to be good. I attended the uh the hospital's public hearing on their proposed uh expansion, of which we will get at the work session uh next week. It was at the school, it was this, it was uh last Wednesday, so it was the last home game for Litchfield. The thought was that would maybe draw some folks that would then go into that and go to the game, um there was about fifteen people there. So we'll, we're having another one, which is on Wednesday night of this week, that one will be at the hospital. So um it's an opportunity for the public to hear about what what's going to happen with the hospital.
Be tomorrow, Paul?
Yes, tomorrow at five-thirty to seven. They started, uh they start the presentation shortly after five-thirty, so if you come in about five-forty-five, you've probably missed about five minutes to ten minutes of the presentation. So you want to, you want to be pretty close to that five-thirty mark. Uh last Friday, we had a CCTV meeting um over in Wilmer, uh that went very well. We are still working on acquiring property for the new facility in Wilmer, or Candy High County, I should say. Their old building does not fit, uh we can't put everything in it, we are storing buses uh in two additional buildings, the old recycling center, and then another older building a ways away from the CCTV main building. So uh that, and then we focused on, you know, our our software that we use when people sign up to take a a ride, how it matches the route and and so forth, so uh that was, that was good. It was just playing a good meeting, um it went well, it was smooth, and I'm very pleased there. Yesterday, of course, I was, we were in uh Mora, and I had to slip out because we had a a CPT meeting, and I'm pleased to say that um they are down in Wabashaw, Minnesota, today making a presentation. Wabashaw County is considering using CPT's tax program, uh and they also made a presentation to Dodge County and gave them a quote, and they have a signed quote back from Dodge, so that must mean it's just waiting for board action, I assume. If it's a quote, I don't know if they, how they did that, but I'll have to, uh it looks like we're going to take on two new customers, so. And then they talked uh quite a bit about the Strategic Planning Committee, of which Andrew is a part of, and how we're moving forward, and I uh I was really pleased to hear many of the things that they talked about, and in talking to Andrew, having attended the meeting too, I think we took a good step forward there, would that be fair to say?
I agree.
Yeah, so. Today is MAP, um tomorrow is Prime West Compliance, um so, and then Thursday's UCAP, which will be a uh, uh I'm sure will be really focused on the planning that we just got from Tina and HSS is how we're going to move forward if the shutdown continues, so that's it from me. So is there any other business to come before the board today? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Way off, Andrew.